It is seven o'clock PM. I call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum member, a quorum of all board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called. And so tonight, we are going to open with an invocation and trustee Linker has agreed to open us up tonight. Trustee Linker?
Sure. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this evening. Thank you for our community, for our faculty, and for our students. As we go into tonight, we ask for wisdom and discernment for our board. And as we go into the fall, we ask you to provide safety for our students. We ask you to keep them healthy and to continue to provide the best opportunities so they can reach their best potential. Thank you so much for our blessings. We love you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, to kick us off tonight, we have some recognitions and celebrations. Dr. Ferguson, you want to help us out with that?
Such an exciting night tonight because we get to name one more of our elementary schools like Abby that come for the family. So this is a little token of our appreciation. So Abby Christie is the daughter of Dan Christie and Dan Christie Elementary will be located in the subfield subdivision. Here's a rendering of the picture and we've got a little video a little bit later too of the school so you can see it. Her dad was such a contributor to Prosper ISD, the town of Prosper, but also well beyond that. Such a giving heart and always wanting better and wanting more for those in the community. I know he was very involved also at University of North Texas where he was a student and played football too, correct? Yes, because he was a big time athlete in Prosper and then of course got into the real estate business which then connected him even deeper into Prosper in this local community. So would you like to say anything about your dad? I always love to hear you talk about him.
Oh, okay. I'm Abby Christie, daughter of Dan Christie, here with his granddaughter Dylan. And we're so happy to be here tonight and so humbled that you guys recognize dad for Dan Christie Elementary. I didn't think I was going to get emotional, but I am. Dad grew up here in this town in Prosper. For many years, he had one of the only businesses in town for decades really. And because of that, he was a go-to for the, for the school and you know, he was always happy to help. He, whether it was balls for the PE class or the uniforms for the football team or Fieldhouse Stadium, whatever it was, dad was there and he, he really loved this school and he loved this town and the people in it. And he always had enthusiasm and a full heart. He did. I want to thank Sean Terry, Mayor Slina, and Mordad Woyadi of Centurion for being instrumental in getting this done and named after dad. And I wanted to say something since I'm here. For all of you that are responsible for naming these schools, and I don't know who you are, but all of you, all of you, I, I just want to say, and I guess I'll turn around but you can hear me. Whether it's Cindy Cockrell, Ralph Boyer, and Mary Lynn, Betty Hughes, the wonderful, wonderful Bill Hayes, Hops Bradley, Mike and Jamie Reeves, and now my dad, these people were instrumental and they, they were here from day one and they, they built this foundation. They did and it, it made it into what it's grown into now. And for dad to be in that company is a real honor. And as an old townie, because I grew up here, my parents grew up here, my daughter grew up here, for y'all to make, take the time to name these schools after these people, it's noticed and it's appreciated. It really is. Holly, it's always a pleasure working with you. And I just want to say that anytime this school needs me, I will be there with a full heart and enthusiasm. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And so we will have a ribbon cutting, which is a huge celebration of your dad and your family. So we look forward to doing that once we have principal and of course students and staff. So get ready for a little more fun to hit your ways.
We're excited.
All right, thank you. Continue with our celebrations this evening. I believe we have our National Merit Scholars with us tonight. Yes, there they are. So if you'll please come forward. This is such a high honor. Yes. And then stand and face the crowd. So this is our National Merit Scholars and they have reached the highest level. These are kids across the nation. And so these are the kids from Prosper ISD that rated the highest or scored the highest and certainly made it to that National Merit semifinalists. So we certainly want to recognize them, Rock Hill High School as well as Prosper High School. And so I'm going to ask you all to do a little bit, so right, because you're about to graduate long. So I want you to step forward and then say your name, what school you're with, and then when did you move to Prosper? Like what grade were you in? Or if you started kindergarten, share that with us.
I'm Quinn Hunter Ford. I go to Prosper High School and I moved to Prosper last year, so beginning of my junior year.
Very good.
Hi everyone, my name is Catalina Dua. I go to Rock Hill High School and I compete for Prosper ISD in eighth grade.
Very good.
Hi everyone, my name is Nasa Modi. I also go to Rock Hill High School and I'm with Prosper 2017, so at the beginning of my seventh grade.
My name is Matthew Oll. I go to Prosper High School and I'm with.
Hi, I'm Andy Warren. I go to Rock Hill High School and I've been in Prosper, I think kindergarten.
What I want to recognize, no matter what point in time they entered into Prosper ISD, whether it was kindergarten or last year, their parents played a very critical role in their academic success. So I want to say thank you to your parents for really contributing and really giving and supporting and probably pushing and expecting a lot of you over the years. But I also want to say thank you to all the educators who gave to your education, no matter what school district you were in, in the nation, in the state, wherever it may have been. So we certainly want to honor each of those educators because we all know, we don't get where we're going without those great educators impacting our academics as well as our parents really supporting us all the way through the journey. So congratulations, we are so very proud of you and we have a few awards for you that we'd like to present to you. Matthew. Quinn. Catalina. Andrew. And Nasa. Congratulations. Okay, now is photo off time. Parents, if you want to come up and get pictures, we'd love for you to do that. You're more than welcome to.
For what Ferguson?
Old. Wow. Not old, you're super smart. You've got cat-like skills.
All right, is everyone ready?
Outstanding. Okay, parents, do y'all want to just get pictures? You can do that, please. Are you urgent?
Here, do you want me to do it? Okay.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Ooh, I sat down too soon.
You did.
We have yet another award. This is my favorite. Will Poe, where are you?
Could've worn a different suit if I don't think.
Right. That's fine, you work at a school, it's fine. I won't hold it against you, we'll get you a tie for Christmas. I wanted to introduce you all to Will Poe. Will Poe actually works in our business and finance area in the district under Dr. Penn's leadership. We are so very, very lucky to have Mr. Poe. He does a phenomenal job and he actually has a really good personality, which we all really love being around him. I love to put fun in him and jokes and he can play along with it. Yeah, for the most part, but he has received a scholarship to continue his education. And so that's with the Texas Association of School Boards.
School Business.
School Business Officials, excuse me. And so we're really excited to be able to honor Mr. Poe tonight. So we wanted to certainly highlight him and all of his excellence. Dr. Penn, you want to come out and take a picture?
Taking?
Are you doing a selfie here?
I don't know.
That can't seem to be good.
Congratulations.
Now we're done with recognitions. All right, we're now at Agenda Item Six, Public Comment on Agenda Items. You know what, I skipped over five, so let's do this. And I actually think this is something we generally skip over. For those of you who did not receive a copy of the agenda, it's on the screens now. Typically, this is posted on the bottom of the monthly meeting agenda, but these are just some important dates that we want to highlight. And so I won't really be like the announcement clerk and read all of them, but it's a, I do need to announce them. Okay. So they are on the screen, so just if you'll pay close attention to those, some of them are of a very special interest, particularly like next month on the fourteenth. We'll be right back here and we invite all of you to come back next month on the fourteenth at seven, all right? So mark your calendars and we'll see you then. Thanksgiving break is on the calendar. So just some dates, all right? That's Agenda Item Five. Agenda Item Six, we are at Public Comment on Agenda Items.
Mr. Will Warren?
Yes ma'am.
We have some students that are still with us.
Are they with us still?
Although we would love to have them stay.
Oh, yes.
I want to give them the chance to be able to exit if they don't.
So let's do this, not just for students, but for those who were recognized tonight during the recognition period. We're going to take just a quick intermission. We won't take too long, but we'll take just a quick intermission and allow those of you who joined us tonight for special recognition to go ahead and sneak out if you desire. You're more than welcome to spend the rest of the night with us. We got a lot of to cover tonight. You're more than welcome to stay, but just in case you think you'll be bored, then we want to give you a few minutes to kind of sneak on out. And we promise not to judge you either.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else want to sneak out at this time? There are a couple of seats on the front row. If anybody's standing in the rear and you want to join us up here. In fact, we have plenty of room down front if you want to have a seat. You don't have to, to stand tonight. Come on down. Anybody else want to join us down here in the front? We got a couple more seats. All right, we're at Agenda Item Six, Public Comment on Agenda Items. All public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to school, district governance, and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student, you are encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in Board Policies FNG, DGBA, or GF Local. Please note that the Board will not respond to comments or questions raised during public comment. Pursuant to Prosper ISD Board Policy BED Local, audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated to receive public comment in accordance with that policy. When necessary for effective meeting management or to accommodate large numbers of individuals wishing to address the Board, the presiding officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures, including establishing an overall time limit for public comment and adjusting the time allowed it for each speaker. However, no individual shall be given less than one minute to make comments. As Presiding Officer of this meeting, I've set the overall time limit for public comment to thirty minutes. We don't have, should we have five speakers tonight? And so in fact, we're going to allow three minutes for each one of these speakers. At this time, we will hear comments related to items on the agenda. Comments about a topic not on the agenda will be heard toward the end of the meeting. Please note, if you begin to speak about an item that is not on the agenda during this portion of our meeting, I will ask you to stop speaking and wait until the non-agenda time for comments. The Board will show each speaker courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking, and we simply ask that each speaker show the same to the Board. Should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption, I'll be forced to prematurely end that speaker's time at the podium. Additionally, in light of issues we have experienced over the past several board meetings, I must reiterate the call for respect. While the Board understands the presence of thoughts, feelings, and emotions, the recent demonstrations of self-control and decorum has deteriorated. Thankfully, we've not had to escort anyone out of our meetings. I must make you aware that this Board no longer allows for audible responses to a speaker's comments. Out of respect to the speaker and the audience, I kindly ask that you completely refrain from clapping, cheering, yelling, booing, or otherwise audibly responding during this time. Failure to adhere to this request will be considered a disruption to the meeting. Should any audience member or group of audience members become a disruption, I will be forced to remove that person or group from tonight's meeting. Finally, it is important that the Board hear from parents and other individuals in our community. To that end, when each speaker gets to the podium, we ask that you will tell us your name and whether you live within Prosper ISD boundaries. Again, we have five speakers that will be given three minutes each. Trustee Cavender will keep time for us. Our first speaker tonight is Chelsea Thomason. Followed by Julia Ferenthal. Good evening, Ms. Thomason. You have three minutes to address the Board.
Okay, my name's Chelsea Thomason and I do live in PISD zoning or district, whatever. My comments are specific to the new Walnut Grove zoning. I have a sophomore at PHS and while I do not envy you guys having to vote on the map, I do have concerns about how the information was disseminated to the parents. I feel that when the realization that the school was going to open in the 2023-24 school year, parents specifically impacted that would be going to Walnut Grove should have had more time to speak with you guys. I know last Monday, we had an opportunity to speak at the school. But I feel like sophomores should have preference in where they're going to complete the remainder of their high school career. Sophomores going into their junior year, it's their junior year transcripts that go with their college admissions applications. That sort of disruption is a stress factor that we shouldn't have to impose on our kids who have worked hard. The last two years of school, we're talking about some of these students who are competing at the varsity level at a six A district. We don't know what the UIL zoning is going to be for Walnut Grove. It's safe to assume what it's going to be, but we don't know that. And I also think the data points that were presented at the meeting last Monday with respect to the amount of families who responded to the Google Forms survey that was sent out. Number one, it wasn't clear if the responses were from families that would be directly impacted by the new zoning or if that was PISD-wide. And so I think to kind of narrow that number down a little bit, knowing the families that would now be zoned to Walnut Grove, having their voice heard versus district-wide, I think is important. And I don't feel that there was clarity in the information that was presented at the meeting last Monday, so that was one thing. The second, not necessarily issue, but concern with the data is it was presented in a way that 100% of seniors, rising juniors, would choose the school that they were districted for. That is just not an attainable number. You can't expect that 100% of students zoned for Walnut Grove seniors are going to choose Walnut Grove. And so to use that number, that data point, and disseminate that to the parents, I felt was a little convoluted. I would like to just have a more definitive number with respect to the Walnut Grove families that would be impacted. I have a sophomore, he's going to be a junior, he competes at the varsity level, six A. I think it's a missed opportunity for him to not be able to.
Thank you, Ms. Thomason. Julia Ferenthal will be followed by David Richard. Is Julia here? Okay.
Hello, my name is Julia Ferenthal and I live in the Prosper ISD School District. I am a rising junior at Prosper High School and I'm a member of the Prosper Mighty Eagle Band and I'm zoned for Walnut Grove. I am currently on the snare line and I have worked very hard to earn my place there. I have built a foundation at this school and I would like to continue it. Countless hours of hard work and dedication have gone to the band program that is already established at Prosper High School. Starting over at a new school would be very challenging and it makes it feel like everything I've worked for is getting thrown away. At Prosper High School, I'm able to have more opportunities for scholarships because of music and because of the reputation Prosper High School has. Not only does staying at Prosper High School benefit my musical aspect in future, but I'm also able to spend my sister's last year of high school with her. We are very close in age and also personally close. She is my best friend and I would be so delighted to be with her, finishing high school and sending her off to college. She is also in band, so we would get to spend another last season together. I have also built lifelong friendships in band. The band schedule is rough and finding time to spend together outside of that is very demanding. By being in the Prosper Mighty Eagle Band, I'm able to be in band and also work on those relationships with my peers. I hope you can come to understand that going to a new school away from your friends and the life you've built at your old school is hard. I'm asking for you to consider my situation and help me have a solid last two years of high school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julia. Hey Julia, I just want to say as a student, thank you for coming out to speak to us tonight. We really appreciate it.
Great job.
David Richard will be followed by Jeremy Sandusky.
I'm David Richard and I live on Prosper Lakes on Preston over here, right behind Kroger's, so I'm in the district. Athletics has been a strong part of my life and I know it is in the school system. And this, this school, Prosper High School, has done a tremendous job of putting programs together. Having family members in that school right now and having come up in the program through Rogers in fact, and I know they come up through Reynolds and other schools now, I understand that even, even at that level, the junior high level, these kids are learning what the coach wants in high school. They're learning to be part of a team that has been extremely successful. I'm asking, from my point of view, to reconsider or consider the fact that these kids that have been in the program, that are going to be juniors and going to be seniors next year when your school opens, when Walnut Grove opens up, they be given the opportunity to pass on. And as I look at the numbers, I look at the number of students that are involved athletically speaking, I'm, I'm sure it's a few hundred and probably not significant to, to change the whole demographics of either school system. But I also understand young ladies like Julie, who very well represented herself, also has, has a, what do they call it? A shell in the game or a nickel in the game, something like that. So from that standpoint, please consider those kids that have worked so hard to get to this level and it is a very high level. If you look at the school systems that are out there and you look at the performance of this school system, they are proud of it and they want to stay with that. Now I understand the new school will have those opportunities in the future, but you will, in the interim period, probably deprive a lot of good students and good athletes of their future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richard, for coming to speak tonight. Mr. Sandusky? Good evening, friend. You have three minutes to address the Board.
All right. Good evening, Board. I appreciate your time and thank you. I too would love to see the sophomores, incoming juniors have the opportunity to have a choice. They've invested two years of their high school career with their coaches, with their teachers, extracurricular activities like Julia, like Julie. And I, I feel like, and I know the choice was given to Rock Hill, so I think there was some precedence that was set there by the previous Board. And my main concern is, and I know we've kind of rushed this through, we have an infrastructure problem. We have a First Street that's going to be paved two lanes. There's one way in and one way out. It's not like PHS where there's multiple ways. And Coit, remember, is still two lanes from Frontier to First Street. And I don't know if many of you travel that road in the morning, going towards Rogers, it is always backed up. So given, I think, the choice, the juniors having the choice, you probably alleviate some of that traffic because that is going to be a major issue. And I don't know if we've taken that into consideration. I know Dr. Bradley said at the meeting at Prosper High School that we don't know when the fourth lane is going to appear. So that, that is very troublesome, especially to students driving that road. I know High School number four in the west side is supposed to be opened up in two years or so. That will dilute from Prosper High School as well. So we're really diluting, you know, a great school that's academic, athletic, and extracurricular activities. So I appreciate your time. Would love to see you please reconsider and allow the juniors to have the choice as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandusky. Sandra Sandusky? Ms. Sandusky, you have three minutes to address the Board. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Board, for listening to us this evening, as I hope it's not falling on deaf ears, as I've reached out to all of you and I am very appreciative to the three that actually took the time to respond back to me. I just want to quickly address on record my concerns as well. I do live in the district. I am married to Jeremy, so we live in the same household. And we have a son that is a current sophomore at PHS that is going to be a rising junior next year that has been potentially zoned to go to Walnut Grove. And with that, I, I too also feel like the information about pushing the school through has become so quickly as a knee jerk that we didn't really have a lot of time to digest this information. Taxpayers, every single taxpayer that pays into Prosper ISD, if they have a student there or not, should have been aware of this. They should have been aware that the school is opening early, that it's projected. They should have been aware that the school is opening early, that it's projected that we've set aside roughly $7 million to do this with a contingency plan of $2.5 million. That money is coming from somewhere and it means it's taking it away from something else. So we have to be responsible with the money that we're, we're putting in as taxpayers and we should have a right to say what's going on. In terms of crowding, what I heard, that's our biggest concern, is that the high school's too crowded and it's not safe for the students to be there. That's why it's not a good idea to give them the choice to stay. Well, the fact of the matter is, it's not really safe to put them at a high school either, that they can't get there safely. As Jeremy mentioned, First Street is a nightmare. Yes, the town is working on it, but it's been said it won't be completed by the time the school opens. We have several juniors that are potentially being forced to attend that school. That is their first year of driving. So they are going to be on the road with all of the school buses, all of the construction, the school that's already on First Street, the daycare that's on Coit Road, Rogers. All of that time that they've got to go into. There is not a lit street on First Street. There are telephone poles, there are electric poles. All of that type of infrastructure is going to have to be moved in order for the students to go to that school to widen those lanes. The subdivision that comes into it, there's no other way uh, to really get to the school minus Coit and Custer or to cut through that subdivision. So I'm sure we're impacting that subdivision too by going through, pushing this all through. Just we're moving so quickly, I don't feel like people have um, had the chance to really think about what's going on. Um, in addition, I know it was mentioned too, U I L rules. I have asked and asked, I've reached out to the U I L and I haven't had a chance to hear back from them and I feel like you're making this decision tonight too, before anybody really knows. We do not know how Walnut Grove will be allowed since we're joining in a year early. Oh, sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sandy, for your comments. Thank you to each one of our speakers during our comment section tonight. We're now at Agenda Item Seven, informational reports. Our first informational report is Agenda Item Seven A, Financial Investment and Tax Report for September 2022. Dr. Penn?
All right. All right, I'm going to present the financials ending September 30th of 2022. This is the first month of our new fiscal year, uh, so it can, some things may, can be odd in this month where they go back to August. Um, our auditors are coming in later in the month, but um, sometimes it does some unique things that you may notice or if something looks a little different next month, it's as things as we get ready to close out last fiscal year, so I'm going to lead with that. Um, looking at our uh, investment portfolio right now, about 315 million in our bond funds, uh, which is about 65% of our overall portfolio. This is paying for all of our ongoing construction projects. Um, and then the remainder of the bulk of that is in our general fund, uh, about 138 million. For a total of uh, 487 million in our portfolio. Uh, looking through the first month of the fiscal year, um, right now, obviously, we're not really collecting taxes, so our taxes will come in at the tail end of this calendar year and the start of the next calendar year. Uh, up to this point, as you can see on that third line there, most of our revenue at this time is coming from the state. So uh, we'll get about half of our state aid through November and then that will stop. We'll pick up taxes through the winter uh, and then back late spring is when the state will pick their aid back up. So that's why we're seeing nothing on the tax side, but about uh, 27% on our state aid. Um, also, uh, we have an amendment later in the meeting that will increase the overall revenue, revenue. So it's reducing some of the, the tax amount, but increasing the state aid. That's due to additional students than what we were anticipating, um, obviously. So um, there will be an increase on that uh, to bring our revenue total to a little above 255 um, million. On the expense side, um, after our first, first payroll, a little under 10%, which is where it would need to be or, or that's right where we want that. Um, and then on our operating, some of those lines you'll see are higher, but they tend to match last year. So in September, that's when all of the campuses and departments have access to their budget. So there's a lot of items that are purchased to get us going for the year, lots of subscriptions, uh, things like that. So you notice it's actually less than what last year was after the first month. Um, and then the capital outlay is tied to some um, portables and then actually some buses that were from a pre- from last year actually that are just now coming into delivery, but that's why you see most of the, the capital expense um, spent early for our general fund side. Um, walking through athletics, um, 257,000 in on the revenue side. Remember, this is all money, gate, gate money from events primarily, um, until in the summer when we add camp funds. And then a 125 on the expense side um, for surplus, um, through September of 131,000. Uh, food service in September, uh, 1.3 on the revenue and a 1.2 million on the expense. You'll notice a big difference from last year. Uh, the reason for that is at that time, we were in transition of food service companies and so we actually didn't have that invoice in September. So it's not that we are really performing substantially different. It's just, uh, that was the, the first um, season with our new food service vendor. So that's really the main difference from last year, but still um, a positive 68,000 for, for September. So in our food service program. Uh, debt service, this one stays pretty dormant uh, also because it's not collecting taxes yet, which is the primary source of this one, uh, minus a little bit of additional state aid for Homestead. Um, and then we won't make a payment on the debt service side until February. So this one won't really see much action until a little bit later in the year, but uh, a little bit of taxes coming in at 173,000 um, and then uh, one payment of 500 and uh, so surplus of 173 of that for September. Um, as we get into some construction, we'll walk through these projects, the Liliana, um, about uh, one-third in on that project, a little over a third on that project, set to open next, next fall. Christie Elementary, uh, getting going there, uh, with most of that still outstanding. And the early childhood school, um, about 15% of that project going, also set to open next year. And then the Walnut Grove, um, which has got about 35% of it still to go, um, also set to open next year. So all four of those projects, that's going to update on those contracts. All right, any questions on the uh, September financials?
Any questions for Dr. Penn? Thank you, Dr. Penn. Red Agenda Item Seven B, Update on Bond 2019 Construction Projects. Have some descriptive and some photos here. Surely we have a video, right? There we go. And we got that date corrected. I like it. That was Walnut Grove. Here is some information on Liliana. And here's information on Dan Christie. And information on the early childhood school.
And I see Ms. Calhoun is here. Her name's Saint.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Great. All right, Agenda Item Seven C, Update on Enrollment. Um, there's information in our packet. You saw this information and so you see our totals, um, we are right at 20, right at 25,000 students. I'd imagine at this point, we're
24,945.
There we go.
So 55 away from hitting that 25,000 mark.
There we go.
So next week.
Next week. I was thinking tomorrow, but okay. All right, and then here it is by campus. And again, this information, um, board members is in your packet. Agenda Item Seven D, we are going to um, hear from Dr. Bradley as he talks to us about high school zoning.
If I can, I'm going to go back real quick to start this presentation with a slide that I think helps make a, make a little sense about what we're going to talk about tonight with high school. I, I do want to point out real quick, I think there's actually a little typo on this. The high school, uh, last year, the population was about 5,300. That says 4,800, but it's still going to prove the point. I want to show you right here. That is, in the last year, we're going about 1,300 high school kids, about 1,000 middle school kids and then about 900 elementary kids. I just want to point out to the board that this is something that we're tracking demographically. So when I talk here in a minute about uh, overperforming our projections, more people moving in here, one of the things that's happening in our district is that we are seeing more secondary kids move in than elementary kids. I mean, you think about that, elementary is six grades, but we only saw an increase of 900 students thus far. Middle school is three grades, but seeing an uptick of 1,000 kids and then high school about uh, 1,300 again. The reason is, um, or one of the reasons we have to go on theories at this point because clearly we haven't surveyed everyone. But when the average home value in your district goes up above 650,000, it's difficult for young families oftentimes to afford a house in your district. And so a lot, what it appears we're seeing at this point is a lot of people moving to the district as their kids get older. And so that's one of the reasons we're here talking about secondary enrollment tonight and having to adjust zones because the trend has been for a long time that your kindergarten number would be the largest number and that's how your, your demographics would roll up. It's not the case right now in Prosper I S D again, and I think a big part of that is because to afford a home in our district often is substantially expensive. And so there's a lot of young families with young kids who may not be able to afford a first home in Prosper and so they're moving here as their second home. So I just wanted to point that out before we go into the high school zoning because I think it plays into some of what we're going to talk about tonight. So student growth has exceeded expectations. Uh, and again, this, I'm going to give you kind of a quick overrun of the presentation we did the last, for the two informational nights. I know many of you board members were there, perhaps many were, that are here were there, but there may be some people that this is new information, so I'm going to try to hit this quickly. Our student growth has exceeded expectations. Our demographer has performed well for the last decade. They've done a good job of predicting and being pretty on point, but this uh, last 12 months, we have overperformed their, overperformed their projections substantially. Uh, from October 1 of last year to October 1 of this year, we've grown 3,366 students. That's the most students we have ever grown in a 12-month period by over 800. So we'd been pretty good at growing 2,500 kids a year, now we're growing 3,300 kids a year. And so that, that extreme growth has led to overcrowding at Prosper High School. And so that's uh, the reason that the board chose to move ahead with Walnut Grove a year early. And then uh, I want to remind people, we get asked a lot about how can you accelerate a massive project a year early? Uh, the substantial completion date of this project was January 1, 2024. So i- it's not totally true that we're moving a whole high school up a year. We're moving it up a school year, but, but not necessarily 12 months in construction cycle. And uh, a- as I mentioned at the meetings, we've benefited from a, a po construction who's completing this building. Uh, is the same crew that built Rock Hill High School. They learned a lot of lessons there. They've been very efficient in their building and it hasn't rained in two years, so it's helped. Um, so that is a big reason why we've been able to go fast, right? And so this, this graph does a pretty good job of showing you uh, the extreme growth that's occurred in Prosper I S D since 2000. Hard to imagine, but in 2000, there were only 890 kids pre-K through 12. Uh, and uh, here we are today, as Dr. Ferguson just said, over 24,900 students. And so we have been in an extreme growth trend. Again, Texas calls fast growth 15% or more in five years and we grow more than 15% every year. And so we're not talking about fast growth, we're talking about extreme growth. There's only about five districts in the state of Texas that have ever grown at the rate we're growing. So uh, as we just looked at, uh, several of these projects, uh, we just mentioned what's going to open next year. Brenda Calhoun, Early Childhood School, Liliana, Dan Christie, Walnut Grove. Uh, we're fixing to break ground on Daniel Jones Middle School as middle school number five. Uh, by uh, June next year, we'll break ground hopefully on elementary school number 18 on the south side of our, our district. And we are currently planning for high school number four and middle school number six. Already started the design process and we've actually already started meetings with the Town of Prosper about these buildings, hoping that they can open in August of '25 and that's what we're pushing for. So a lot of construction going on, just what I mentioned right there, totals about $600 million worth of construction. So a lot of money is being expended to try to get the schools on the ground as fast as we can for this extreme growth that we are experiencing. This is just a quick loop of the map. I remember it's 50, about 58 square miles that make up Prosper I S D. Just pointed out to the groups that night, the question I get asked the most, how come school boundaries and town boundaries don't line up? It's confusing. And just like to remind you that the school boundaries were really set. Uh, our, our boundaries have remained the same except for one small change in the early eighties. Our boundaries have stayed the same since 1940. The deal was these towns didn't, weren't anywhere close to us in 1940, right? Frisco was a little community way south here. Salina was way north and what's happened over the years is that the commute, McKinney, Salina and Frisco have expanded their territory, right? And so they've, uh, I like to say they've intruded on our space, not us on theirs, okay? So that's why town boundaries and school district boundaries don't line up. And so that's why uh, we make it, we're, we're in part of five municipalities in two different counties. And so it can be a little confusing, but you see that we have a dispersal of schools all across this 58 square miles. Uh, current schools and future schools. Uh, we spend a lot of time uh, looking at land, have to purchase a few more sites. We've done a pretty good job. The board has, has prepared for high schools and middle schools and, and we're still looking at elementaries as this map continues to fill in. Honestly, the scariest thing about this map, all the ways to me is just the vacant space that's still left. There's still a whole lot left. Uh, by any estimation, we're only about half built out. So uh, it's just, uh, that's why we're well on our way to 50,000. So Walnut Grove High School, uh, opening uh, next year, a comprehensive high school, offering the same programs that we have at Prosper High School in Rock Hill. There's a couple of exceptions, we could talk about those, but for the most part, it's a comprehensive high school, C T E center included, beautiful building. Um, and I just want to, uh, I mentioned that I'm excited about this building. Again, it's a very similar floor plan to Prosper High School and Rock Hill. Uh, so a lot of the things that uh, are in there, uh, those buildings are going to be in Walnut Grove. It is a little unique. Always, we do a little bit, a, a unique flair to each building. This building will have its own, but it's going to be a beautiful school. Uh, again, very similar in size and, and function, 530,000 square feet on the academic building, about 75,000 on the uh, multipurpose athletic facility, okay? So um, we're here to talk about zoning, everyone's favorite thing, as we mentioned uh, uh, at those two meetings. Uh, I, I believe the, the board has always had an overriding agenda about zoning. We want to do it as few times as possible because it's not fun for anybody and none of us enjoy this process. Uh, but again, because of that extreme growth, we find ourselves in this situation and we're going to keep continuing finding ourselves in this situation. And so what we're trying to do is identify zones and based on the demographer's projections, zones that make sense and, and keep us from having to yo-yo kids. And so while I understand that, that many would be concerned about the major impact this will have next year, one of the things that we're trying to do and provide information to you is, uh, what's the best way we can do this without having to make a move and then turn around and undo that move just two years later? And so that's what we're trying to And so that's what we're trying to, to do our best, it's an imperfect science, but we do what we can. And so we sent this map out a couple of weeks ago, after the announcement was made, and we collected feedback. The initial feedback, this was the breakdown of those who responded, about fifty percent said they were satisfied, about ten percent were neutral with the zone, and about thirty-seven percent said, you know, we're dissatisfied for some reason, okay? And there were further questions in this survey and allowed people to provide feedback, not just clicking yes, no, or neutral, but what are you specifically concerned about, what are some things that you would like to see different? And so we took that information from this map, okay, so this is the map, my apologies, this is the map that we sent out. We took this feedback information, and we put all of this together and said, hey, what does this zone get us, okay? So that we revealed this at the meetings the other night. If we were to go with these zones right here, this is what the numbers would look like for next year. Just by way of mention again, if we didn't do, if we didn't open Walnut Grove, zero doubt that PHS would probably be over forty-two hundred, and Rock Hill would be well over thirty-one hundred, okay? And that's still kind of a conservative estimate based on the demographer today. I just told you we overperformed the projections this year, it could be, it could be worse than that. And so this is the zone, if, if everyone went to their attended zone, but as might have been mentioned earlier, we can't know for sure how many seniors would choose to go to Walnut Grove or not. And so as I said in the two meetings, that nineteen-sixteen number at Walnut Grove is not completely true, we know that. Because we don't know how many are gonna choose, you give seniors the choice, I do not know how many of them are gonna choose to Walnut, go to Walnut Grove, and how many of them would choose to stay at either Prosper High School or Rock Hill High School. I can't predict, I, I don't know if fifty percent will go, I don't know if twenty percent will go, I don't know. So this, so right now, we just had to take this information based on what we know. And so if kids went to their zone school based on this map, this is what it would look like. So we, we sent that out, talked about that, we got some feedback, that feedback broke down, and one of the things we heard is that were two groups of people that were, you know, really adamant about what they wanted to see as a change in this zoning. And the, the first thing was, sorry, let me go back here, the first thing was this zone up here, right east of Prosper High School. So this group that lives north of Prosper Trail and west of Coit Road that are very close to Prosper High School. That was probably the number one piece of feedback we heard back on, if you were dissatisfied with the original map, that group, that contingent said, hey, we wanna stay at Prosper High School, we're right across Preston Road from them. We can look right down at it, and so we would like to stay at Prosper High School. So this map reflects that, the second group that we heard from is a group that lives over in Tucker Hill and towards the Mansions of Prosper. And they said, hey, we would like to go to Walnut Grove High School. So we took that feedback that we received online and created this map. And so when we did that, obviously it produced new numbers. Now again, big caveat is, don't know how many seniors are choosing to go which, whichever way, but you'll see it reduces Walnut Grove about a hundred, it increased Prosper High School around two hundred, and had a little bit of effect, about a hundred, I think, down on Rock Hill High School, I'll show you a slide in a minute that compares all of these. But this map, just for you to know, this map was just based on feedback that we received from parents online when we sent out the survey with the original map. And so we made this map, worked with our demographer to come up with this, listening to the feedback that we heard. And again, this screen just kind of zooms in on that area, again, it's just west of Coit, north of Prosper Trail, and along Frontier Parkway. And then this group down here on the right, Tucker, the Tucker Hill neighborhood up to the Mansions of Prosper. So that just kind of highlights those areas. These are the numbers side by side, option one, the, the option that we sent out originally, and then option two. And so you see the, the difference there, right, about a hundred-and-eighty-eight kids difference at Prosper High School, Rock Hill about ninety, and then Walnut Grove, I think it's a difference of ninety-two or something like that. And so that was option two. Last week, we had two in-person, person meetings, one at Rock Hill High School, one at Prosper High School, where I gave a very similar presentation. Many of you as board members were there to receive input, we had a lot of staff members there. And so we listened to the individuals that showed up, sent this information out again, after those meetings, to gather further input. And so then we had a, a board subcommittee meeting on zoning last Thursday to kind of put all that together and get all the information back to you. And out of that, we have option two A emerged, so I wanna show that to you now. It's a, a fairly minor change, but right now, this map, again, this, this resembles the, the first map that we sent out. What we are proposing for option two A, just show you that again, it's again, the, the, the folks just east of Prosper High School. But then if you look over in the, on the east side, it changes this Rock Hill High School zoning to basically run around, run along what is Ridge Road. So in the original one, we, we had showed that map, option two, that just kind of followed the creek bed up Tucker Hill, and it's kind of this real jagged line that goes up to First Street. And so this follows Ridge Road all the way from the, the southern boundary, three-eighty, to the northern boundary, up there where fourteen-sixty-one comes down. Now, the thing is, this, just to point out, the difference between option two A, and again, this is, this is the, the first, or first option here, but the difference between option two and option two A is a decent amount of land and only about eighteen kids. So there's very few kids that live up in this northeastern corridor, okay? And there's very few kids that live between Tucker Hill and Reeves Elementary. There's a lot of open land there, there's a few businesses, there's a few farms, but there's very few kids. In fact, I mean, I think it was eighteen was the exact number between the northeast corner and right there. So there's not very many kids in this area, but it looks like a massive land shift. But the other reason we talked about option two A to present that to you tonight, it accomplishes everything that option two accomplished, but also it, it provides us with a much cleaner line on that western boundary of Rock Hill, instead of trying, you know, figuring out what, where's the creek line go. And it also helps us potentially with a middle school zoning situation, because we've had a situation where some kids over here were Baker Elementary, then they went to Hayes Middle School, and then they went to Prosper High School. It didn't really make a whole lot of sense, it was just an oversight that happened three years ago when we were creating the Rock Hill Zone. Again, there was only, at that time, it only involved about three kids. And so, so this, option two A emerged from feedback we heard from some of those parents that live in those areas. And then again, it just made sense along, now Ridge Road is being constructed on three-eighty right now, if you drive by there today, you'll see that it's being constructed from three-eighty, but it exists as County Road one-sixty-one further north of there. And so it will eventually be on McKinney's master plan, this will be a fairly major road, a four-lane divided road that moves through this area. And so that, option two A came about because of that. These are the numbers that reflect that. And, and again, I'm not gonna hang out on this slide long, because I'm gonna get to the, the one that shows them all together.
I do have a question about it though.
Yes, sir.
On, on this slide, so Ridge Road, just from my own understanding, is not there presently, or it is there?
The southern portion of Ridge Road is not there currently. The, the northern portion from, from what is First Street, it's not called First Street in McKinney, but from there on, it, it is complete. Up until you get right up close to Frontier.
And then?
It's being constructed right now to open next year.
Perfect, the easternmost street, would that be Lake Forest, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, alright, correct, that is the district's eastern boundary. And so these are the numbers that reflect option two A, so really, I mean, it only kind of, I guess makes sense to compare it to option two, and you see, it doesn't affect PHS at all, because you didn't check, you didn't affect their line, and the impact it has on Rock Hill and Walnut Grove is sixteen kids. So again, it's a, it's a small, a small move, again, it's a big piece of land move, but it's a small move when it, when it concerns the number of students there. So I wanted you to see that, that was, again, just taking the feedback originally got us to option two, and then based on the meetings we had last week and some of the concerns we heard, we felt that option two A was also a good option to present to you, to again, kind of clean up, clean up that line. So the considerations that we were looking at, as I mentioned in the, in the meetings, we do not have true feeder patterns right now, we, we know that. And it's difficult in a fast-growth district to have true feeder patterns, we would love to have true feeder patterns. Two elementaries feed a middle school, two middle schools feed a high school, it'd be amazing. Right now, we're talking about having four middle schools and three high schools, so you can't really divide that evenly and make it, you know, awesome all the way through. And so we are trying to get there, that map, again, would help us on the east side and actually on the west side, because the other thing I failed to mention earlier is those kids that live just east of Prosper High School, that live east of Preston Road and west of Coit Road are currently zoned to Reynolds Middle School. So it would help, you know, keep them in the, in the situation that they're in, they're zoned to Reynolds, and it would keep them at Prosper High School. And then this move over to Ridge Road would help us clean up kind of the Hayes and Rogers attendance zone. So we're trying as best we can, we, we won't have true feeder patterns, but we're trying to, to make the, the lines line up to make sense. Rising seniors choosing their campus, again, from the beginning, we have communicated this, that, that the board felt, and I think when we released this, that seniors would choose their campus. Rising juniors choosing their campus, that's the third most feedback that we received. So that, that part just east of Prosper, going to Prosper High School, one. The Tucker Hill and Mansions of Prosper contingent, number two. And then even as you heard tonight, there's been a lot of questions about rising juniors choosing their campus. And certainly understand that, that ask for that. The, the only thing I wanna point out is that concerning juniors, that, that I think you're well aware of is, as I mentioned, these numbers can only account for the zone, they can't account for seniors choosing. But if seniors are given the option to choose, those numbers are going to be different, because certainly some would choose to stay at Prosper High School, and some would choose to stay at Rock Hill, and it would have an impact for one year. If you allow rising juniors to choose, then those numbers are gonna be affected for two years and likely be more. And at some point, i- i- if you choose to do that, you run the risk of, of not ultimately relieving Prosper High School, which, which was one of the goals. And so that is why, you know, I understand the, the request for rising juniors to choose, but that's what we're going to, that's what we're having to look at. So I, I just wanna end this part of the presentation with a future attendance and boundary adjustments. We anticipate over the next month that we are going to send out some information about adjustments to middle school attendance boundaries. I don't think there will be major shifts there, but, but want to make the public aware that we're trying, in this move to try to get to true feeder patterns, as I just mentioned to you. We will put out some information regarding that. And then elementary attendance boundaries have to change because of the opening of Liliana and Christie Elementary Schools. And so over the next two months, we're gonna engage in this same process that we just did with the high schools, we'll send out the proposed zones, we'll ask for community feedback, we'll make adjustments as needed, and we'll present to the board for approval. So I just wanted to give the community a heads up that we, that we will have some conversations about middle school and elementary zoning. Again, just to, to try to align those true feeder patterns, and then also, new schools require new zones, obviously. And so we'll get that information out to the community and elicit their feedback as we did, as we did in this situation. That's the presentation.
Okay, so again, this is, at this point in the agenda, this is an informational report, there is no action on this report at this present time in the meeting. Are there any questions for Dr. Bradley as relates to his presentation?
Dr. Bradley, I had one. On the slide where you show numbers, doesn't matter which zone, it shows our total capacity of eighty-four hundred, and then, keep going back one, sorry. Yeah, that bottom gray, bottom left. So when we get to twenty-four, twenty-five, that's gonna be twenty-five, twenty-six is, is what we're striving for, for high school four. So we're doing our best to stay at capacity, right, to stay ahead of the, the growth, but zoning is what is the challenge.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question, I don't know if you want to talk about this now or once we get later into the meeting, but regarding UIL, Dr. Ferguson, you had a good explanation on some of the questions about what will Walnut Grove be able to participate in as far as varsity sports go? Could you share, or Dr. Bradley?
Yes, actually, they'll be able to play varsity sports, the only one that becomes in question is football. So that's the one that we have to get permission from whatever district we land in, from the superintendents and their athletic directors.
It's not a no, we just have to get permission, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and then the others, it's Texas, right, so football has to get approval.
Has that been an issue in the past?
Depends on what district you land in, and then how many superintendents are former football coaches. It's what I have learned.
Are there other questions for Dr. Bradley as it relates to his presentation? Alright, thank you so much, Dr. Bradley, we appreciate it. Alright, our final informational report, agenda item seven E, we are gonna take a look at the October twenty-twenty-two elementary class size waivers. That information is in your packet. Any questions or comments as it relates to that informational report? Again, there's no action that we need to take on it tonight, but that information is, is available to you. Any thoughts about it? Okay, that takes us through all of our informational reports. We're now at action items for tonight, agenda item eight A, consideration and possible action regarding the annual renewal of the district's investment policy. With this one, this information is in your packet. There are two changes that are being proposed for, for this action item, and again, this, there's a memo in your packet. Are there any questions about it? If so, we could ask Dr. Penn to speak to these to some extent, but if not, any questions? We do need to take action on it.
I'll make a motion, then. I move that the board approve the annual review of the district's investment policy as presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Beavers, is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Again, are there any thoughts, questions, comments before we vote on this one? All in favor about it? Alright, that is all of us. Agenda item eight B, consideration and possible action, authorizing representatives of local government investment cooperative, Logic. This too is in your board packet for the evening. Are there any thoughts about this one, any questions or comments? And this one is, we are just changing out who the authorized representatives are from the business office?
Yeah, so it's just an administration, administrative move.
It is. I will ask for a motion?
I make a motion, I move that the board approve the representatives for the local government invested, investment cooperative as presented by administration.
Thank you so much, Trustee Dixon, is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Trustee Linker, all in favor? That is all seven of us. Agenda item eight C, consideration and possible action regarding designating additional investment officer. Again, we're doing some cleanup, and this one is in your packet as well. This is another item from the business office, and so we are, again, this is just making sure our forms are intact. I'll ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the additional investment officers as presented by administration.
Thank you so much, Trustee Dollar, is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Trustee Cavender, any questions? All in favor? That is all seven of us. Agenda item eight D, consideration and possible action regarding budget amendment. There are two budget amendments that are in your packet this month, and Dr. Penn mentioned these briefly when he was giving his financial update during informational report. But the memo does talk through what these are and why these budget amendments are being requested. Are there any questions about this one? Do we need to have any? I'll ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the budget amendment as presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Smith, is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Trustee Dixon, all in favor? That is all seven of us. Agenda item eight E, consideration and possible action regarding members of the School Health Advisory Council. This one is listed out, there is, there's information in your board packet about this one, and you'll see the names of the individuals who are parents, as well as those who are not parents, who are in, in the community, who are being recommended for the, what's referred to as shack member list. And there are thirty-three individuals on here for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. And so any thoughts, questions, or comments about this one?
No, we had some that decided to stay, but then we also have some. How long does one stay on that, as long as they want, or is, do they have a term?
I think we go out for every year, right, Ms. Geizy, but they can remain on if they choose to do so.
Can you talk a little bit about what their responsibilities are and how they advise us?
They're looking at predominantly health services for our students, wellness, nutrition, all of those things that go into that component with the student health advisory. And you can see the individuals on their, their, kind of their background. There is something that in their professional life then leads them to serve on this committee. And we're certainly looking for those people because we want some of that level of expert.
This group does not act independently. They are acting in a court or alongside Ms. Geizy. So this is, and again, this is administrative in nature. These individuals have been nominated, but with this particular one, Texas Education Code does require the board to take care of this action item.
I'm thankful for the group stepping up to do this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm thankful for any parent who's volunteering in our district.
No doubt.
Are there any additional comments about this one? All right, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the members of the School Health Advisory Council as presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Beavers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Dahl. All in favor? That is all seven of us. Agenda Item 8F, consideration and possible action regarding an amendment to the GMP for Jones Middle School. Dr. Bradley?
Yes, sir. And I want to point out, that was a clerical error on my part on that motion. It says regarding an amendment. It should just, it should just say regarding the original GMP. We have not had the GMP yet, so we're not amending it. We are adopting the, or asking for the adoption of the GMP tonight. So I bring before you tonight Daniel Jones Middle School. We bid this last month, spent time vetting that. And it comes in at the eye-popping number of one-hundred-four-million-sixty-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, which is large, large guaranteed maximum price. We are not unaware of the extreme escalation cost in construction over the last several months. We have seen it reflected in our elementaries. And this one is tracking about the same. We're seeing a twenty to twenty-five percent increase in cost, sometimes ranging up to thirty percent in particular trades. And we have worked with POG to get this to where it needs to be. I have over here tonight Brendan Colquitt and Derek Steinmeier from POG are here. And, you know, I'll be happy to kick any questions to them. But, but I would point out, there is a, you know, a large difference in this one in the cost of, of middle school three and middle school four, Hayes and Rushing. But to remind you and around the community, one of the things that we've done is this building actually has about forty-five thousand more square feet in it. And the reason is that we made the decision to build our middle schools a little bit bigger. Our current floor plan has, was designed kind of with the idea that two grade levels, maybe six and seven would be down and eighth grade would be up or vice versa, depending on the principal and the situation. But this is actually filling out that second floor, which would bring our, our core capacity from really about eleven-fifty or twelve-hundred up to fifteen-hundred. All of our middle schools, except Reynolds right now, have that many kids in them. And Reynolds has had seventeen-hundred before. And so, you know, again, this extreme growth and, and trying to get these on the ground, essentially the, the decision was made to build these larger and ultimately build one less. So we feel like we, with this bond, we could build these a little bit bigger because we're, we're used to these large middle schools anyway. And so this really allows us to do that. So this building costs more clearly because it has a lot more square footage to it. It has a little bit of site work, as they all do. But it's going right there, just north of Rock Hill High School. And so we benefit from some of the utilities that we were already able to put in. We're not having to drill a separate well on this facility. We're actually able to use the well at Rock Hill and, and save some costs there. So I stand before you tonight, asking for approval for the guaranteed maximum price for Jones Middle School.
This information is in your packet as well. There's the four-page document that details this out by category and shares with you the breakout of cost, as well as the cost per, per square foot. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Bradley? This is an action item, so we do need to at least consider a vote tonight. Anybody, any questions?
You may have just said the square footage was what, Dr. Bradley?
About forty-five thousand above what it was at, so it was around a hundred, between a hundred and seventy-five and a hundred and eighty. At Rushing and Hayes, there's a little bit of difference in each one. And then this is two-twenty-five or two-thirty.
Great.
The buildout will be at eleven to thirteen middle schools. And so Dr. Bradley made a key point, when you think about inflation and where we'll be at eleven to thirteen middle schools, with that additional story, you build three more middle schools. Basically, you have the equal to Rushing or to Rogers design and a Hayes design. So we, we can cut down on possibly another building being needed where we get to the end of buildout.
Any other?
Less rezoning.
And less rezoning.
Key point, key point.
Good idea.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion for this action item.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the guaranteed maximum price for Jones Middle School as presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Cavender. Is there a second?
All second. She got it.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. All in favor of this motion? That is all seven of us. Thank you, Dr. Bradley. Red Agenda Item 8G, consideration and possible action regarding purchase of laptops and interactive displays and renewed antivirus software. This information is in your packet. If there are any questions, then I'm going to toss it to Fernando. Is there any additional information you desire to share with us tonight?
No, the equipment, if approved, will be purchased and is scheduled to be replaced no later than the summer of twenty-three.
Okay. Again, this information is in your packet. Are there any questions? Fernando has come to the podium. Any questions for him as it relates to this one?
I did, so is Boyer and Spradley the only two that have the projectors left? We've gone.
No, Hayes is the next one.
Hayes is the next one. Okay, so there's a plan.
That's correct.
Thank you.
But that one will come the year after.
Okay. And everything now is being built with the, no longer the bulb, correct?
That is correct. Boyer and Spradley, when we introduced the interactive televisions, were already so advanced that those were the cut. But they are already getting to five years, so.
Yep.
Okay, you see the financial request as it relates to this one. I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the purchase of laptops, interactive displays and renewed antivirus software as presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Beavers. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Trustee Dahl. All in favor of this one? That's all seven of us. While Fernando is still here, I think he's gonna give us another one. So let's go directly into Agenda Item 8H, consideration and possible action regarding purchase of network equipment for new and existing schools. This information is in your packet as well. Any questions for Fernando while he's still with us at the podium? Is there anything you'd like to say about this one?
Yes, there is a quick update on category two, network electronics. When you read two-point-two, a million, that has been dropped to one-point-one.
Awesome.
Now that we don't have to rush the elementary schools and the middle school for twenty-four, and some adjustments, we have dropped that amount to one-point-one.
I like it.
It's good news.
Like that a lot.
All right, I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the purchase of network equipment for new and existing schools as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Trustee Dixon. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Trustee Linker. All in favor? That's all seven of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. Agenda Item 8, eight, eight I, I'm sorry. Consideration and possible action regarding multiple architecture firms who completed the request for a qualifications process. Dr. Bradley?
Yes, sir. We're bringing you tonight a, the scoring of, evaluation of a request for qualifications for architects. We had a great response to this. So we had twenty responses to this RFQ. But we are recommending tonight for architects to be qualified for work in Prosper ISD. The first, as you see, of course, is Huckabee. We've got a great relationship with Huckabee over the years, done amazing things here, continue to do the work that we need them to do. And so you will see that it's reflected in their evaluation. We appreciate the partnership that Josh and team have showed to us. And so certainly recommending Huckabee again. And then I have three others, got some, some individuals here tonight representing their firms in the back. VOK Architects, if you guys want to wave, Ross is back there. WRA Architects back here as well, Western guys. And then over here, Corgan is here. And so we took this out. Again, I just want to make it clear that Huckabee has been a fantastic partner, haven't done anything wrong. This is not getting away from Huckabee. They have done amazing work for us and, and the partnership will continue. But as a rapidly growing district with needs all over the place and building toward the next bond and numerous projects coming up, we felt that it was wise to have options. Just again, due to the immense amount of work that we have going on in this district, we didn't ever want to get caught in a situation where we didn't have someone at the ready if needed. And so what you're doing tonight, qualifying these architects, just means that, on our recommendation, if you were to approve, just allows us to work with them, doesn't require us to work with them. They could be qualified and then maybe not have any work for a while. But this would exist over several years. And so we would have the option of utilizing one of these other architect, architectural firms. And so we're, we're asking for your approval of, of those tonight.
Is there anybody from Huckabee here tonight?
There is from Huckabee. There is Josh Brown, and I believe I saw Joe Tremblay here in the back.
Good deal. Thank you guys for being here. And this is just from my own curiosity. So there are twenty on the list. Are there any of the other firms here tonight?
I do not believe so. If they, if they were.
Okay, just curious.
Welcome, VOK, WRA and Corgan to Prosper ISD.
Absolutely.
You've got some really tough competition because Huckabee has knocked it out of the park for our district for years. And so we look forward to continuing our relationship with Huckabee as well as all of you.
Dr. Bradley, what's the time? You know, this is a pool. Is there a timeframe that this is, this will stand for?
So I would, Dr. Penn may say different, but generally we've used these for five-year segments. I think, I mean, I don't know that there's hard and fast law on that, but that's generally what we've, is what we have utilized them for when we've done this in other services. Thank you.
I, I think most of you can keep beyond that, you know, like different general practice. I, I would think at some point if we had.
We'll check into that and verify that.
Are there other questions for Dr. Bradley as it relates to this action item? Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the top four architecture firms who completed the request for qualifications processes presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Linkers. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Trustee Cavender. All in favor? That is all seven of us.
Now officially welcome.
Now officially welcome. That's right. Agenda Item 8J. We have one more Agenda Action Item for tonight. Agenda Item 8J, consideration and possible action regarding twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four high school attendance zones. This goes back to the information that we've had an opportunity to see of late, as well as a presentation from Dr. Bradley earlier with the proposed attendant zone of two A, option two A, I think is what administration is recommending. And so let's, let's kind of take a look at this and have any conversation that we believe we should have before possibly voting on this tonight. I think the community would like to see us vote tonight, but let's, let's see if we can get to a vote. Are there any thoughts about this before we attempt to move forward?
Well, I'll, I guess I will start off the conversation by saying, as Dr. Bradley said, this is never a fun topic. This is my first high school zoning to be on the board, to be a part of. And the feedback online, the hundreds of feedback that we were able to read through the online portal, personal emails, emails to the board, conversation with friends, acquaintances, neighbors. Obviously, it's been emotionally taxing on all of us because zoning impacts every student in some way and every student differently. And so as much as our desire, I, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think it's easy to say would be to give everybody a choice and have it work out perfectly for everyone. We know that a decision unfortunately has to be made that probably will not please everyone, which is difficult.
Anyone else?
I think it's important to talk about, you know, where, where this all started, right? This all started with the crowding discussion at PHS. And so as we look at that, we have to make decisions based on that data and what the demographers telling us, right? I do, I'm thankful for the feeder pattern discussion, right? I think that's, as we think about that yo-yo zoning and what has been and what will continue to be because of just the state of our district, we want to try to minimize that as much as possible. And I think option two A appears to, to accomplish that. The only thing I think was important to note was just the opportunities, right? That as much as this is not easy and we want to give the students that are involved the opportunities to continue to excel, I think this opens up more opportunities for a larger group of our students to be able to step in and thrive at a new, a new place with new programs and new positions filled. I loved Julia, the student that came up and spoke as a snare drummer, right? To be able to go and maybe be the captain as a, a younger student on a new drum line. Again, I know it's not easy. It's, as, as Dina said, it's, it's a difficult decision. But trying to find the light in some of those things is where I've, my brain has been.
I know both of you are on the zoning committee. And I, I believe we've kind of captured, even in Dr. Bradley's presentation, most of the things that have coming out, coming out of zoning committee. Are there any other comments that possibly we should consider? That maybe came up during the zoning committee meeting?
The only other thing would be the safety concern and how crowded the hallways are.
Okay.
Watch it out for our students.
Yeah, absolutely. As we were getting the feedback and listening to, you know, senior choice and junior choice and trying to decide, you know, what, what ultimately is going to, to work. As I said, nothing is perfect for every family, unfortunately. But looking at the maps and the options and with the feeder patterns and trying to not break up as few of middle school, you know, into high school as possible. It looks like that map two A kind of helps with that, so you're not dividing them at those pivotal years moving into high school. But then if you give those options to younger students, what it does to overcrowding and, you know, and I've heard both sides from, from conversations, but ultimately not just the crowds in the hallways, but the opportunities in the classrooms, the relationships with the teachers, the, the lunches that we've heard about, all the different things that go into that. And the activities, the opportunities that people are fighting for those, those spots in the extracurricular. I know the boards prior to us years ago and in the prior administration decided many years ago that we weren't going to be that one big school, that we were going to give our children, our students more opportunities. So zoning is inevitable.
The final thing I might say, Mr. Wilborn, is as we think about kind of the future zones, right? With high school four, high school five, you know, thinking about that as we thought about this decision is something I think administration did a great job of also thinking about, again, that yo-yo zoning. So could we have pulled more students from the west side? Yeah, but very quickly, they will be potentially zoned to high school four. So I think it's important to note that, yeah, PHS is still going to have a, a big population, but we know there's an end in sight there and don't want to move students twice if we don't have to.
That's a good point. I, I saw on one of the slides that Dr. Bradley presented, he had the number of people or number of parents in our community who've responded to the surveys and the percentages there. And, you know, it was a large number of people who responded. I'm only bringing that up to say I know a good number of parents or community members have reached out to each one of us via email or stopped us in Kroger or wherever to have a conversation to let us know what their thoughts are about, about zoning. And I don't know, when you hear from both sides, it makes it difficult because you'll have a conversation with a parent who, you know, you have a relationship with and they really, really, really reel you in. And it's like, okay, I agree with that. And then you turn down the next aisle of the grocery store and there's a parent who has a totally different perspective. And it's like, wait. And it's like, wait, that was a very, can you go talk to the other parent? Because that was like a really, really, really good point. And you're, you're stuck in the middle, which is quite honestly where we are tonight. Which is why, you know, I want to make sure that we're really, really, really talking this through and thinking this through because this does have implications on families. These, these are data points. And I think as a board, we, we definitely have to look at these data points. And at the same time, these are students, these are families, and we have to, you know, consider that. We have to, to understand that these are, these are individual lives that we're, we have this impact on. Other thoughts, questions, comments?
I think it's important to state too that everybody feels passionately about their current school that they're at. And that is a big testament to the teachers and administrators that are at that school that have done an awesome job to make it to where people feel passionately. I also believe that people will feel just as passionately about Walnut Grove once it opens because we have done an excellent job as a district. So Dr. Ferguson, to the people that are under you, they've done great. And we please pass along our appreciation to them for such a good job. And also know that the bar is extremely high for Walnut Grove going into it.
That's a good point, Trustee Beavers. We shouldn't talk about Walnut Grove as though it's doom and gloom. As much as we love P H S and as much as we love Rock Hill, there's going to be another amazing campus in Prosper I S D. Walnut Grove Wildcats.
Well, I'm thankful that we've, this is not the first, second high school, first opportunity to open an additional high school that we've lived through that as a district once, and it went so well. To see the programs thrive, even booster clubs thrive and all the different activities across U I A academic fine arts and to watch our students really rise to some of those leadership positions. I did want to mention something that we discussed in our subcommittee meeting, that some of those varsity athletes, whatever grade they may fall in, even if they are a senior that is getting a choice, that I've heard through the grapevine, if they've gotten a letter jacket or a ring, that those vendors are eager to work with them. Or we will suggest they be eager to work with those students and families to help make those accommodations because we know that's a lot of money invested by our families.
And they will. They did that with Rock Hill and were fabulous at changing out stone colors or letter jackets, whatever needed to be done. And they will do the same for us with Walnut Grove. They've been a great partner.
That's good to know.
Any other board members have any thoughts or questions you want to, to get answers to before we attempt to move towards a vote? Can y'all tell I'm avoiding the vote? All right, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve option two A for the 2023, 2024 high school attendance zones and grade configurations as presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Cavender. Any other thoughts about it before we vote? All right, all in favor?
Hold on, sorry. I want to make sure there's clarity there on the grade configurations because Dr. Bradley talked about both choice for seniors, choice for juniors.
Okay.
So the clarity is that this is choice for rising juniors who are going to be seniors. That's the choice. That's what we're approving tonight.
That's the recommendation from administration.
That's the recommendation. Okay, just making sure there's clarity there. Thank you.
Is that?
Clarification, rising seniors, seniors, incoming seniors?
Incoming seniors. Yes, thank you for the clarification.
That is the, the recommendation from administration, right? Dr. Bradley, that's the, okay, okay. Is that the clarification you needed?
Yes, sir.
You good?
I'm good, thank you.
Trustee Linker, you good? All right, so we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. All in favor? That is all seven of us. Okay. That takes us through our action items. We are now at consent agenda. This is item nine A, approval of the minutes from prior meetings. There is one meeting for approval tonight, the September 19th, 2022 regular board meeting. I will ask for a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda.
A second?
Thank you, Trustee Dial. Thank you, Trustee Beavers. All in favor? That's all seven of us. Okay, that takes us through all of our points of action for tonight. We're now at agenda item 10. Agenda item 10 is public comment on non-agenda items. And tonight we do have three speakers. Let me just share the same information that I shared as, as we were approaching agenda item, comment, public comment on agenda items. All public comments at regularly scheduled meetings should be limited to school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student, you are encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in board policies, F N G, D G B A, or G F local. Please note that the board will not respond to comments or questions raised during public comment. Pursuant to Prosper I S D board policy, B E D local, audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated to receive public comment in accordance with that policy. When necessary for effective meeting management or to accommodate large numbers of individuals, we only have three. So what we're going to do is each one of these speakers will be given three minutes. At this time, we will hear comments related to non-agenda items. The board will show each speaker courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking, and we simply ask that each speaker show the same to the board. Should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption, I will be forced to prematurely end that speaker's time at the podium. Additionally, in light of issues we've experienced over the past several board meetings, I must reiterate a call for respect. While the board understands the presence of thoughts, feelings, and emotions, the recent demonstrations of self-control and decorum has deteriorated. Thankfully, we've not had to escort anyone out of the meeting. Lastly, it's important that the board hear from individuals who are parents in our, from parents or individuals in our community. To that end, as I call your name, once you make it to the podium, I simply ask that you'll let us know if you are in Prosper I S D. Our first speaker is Cherie Bennett, followed by Amy Lancaster, followed by Chrissy Ball. Ms. Bennett, you have three minutes to address the board.
Hi, I'm Cherie Bennett, and I do have a child in the district.
Thank you.
My public comment tonight is not to the panel of the board members or superintendent. I want to address the parents and taxpayers of this district. If you had told me three years ago that I'd be up here doing this, I would have laughed you out of the building. But my eyes have been open the last three years of what's going on in our school district. It seems we have elected school board that seems to be working for the superintendent. We, the taxpayers, elect members to work for us, and they in turn keep the superintendent accountable for her leadership. Caught case in point, we have over a thousand signatures on a petition to suspend the superintendent while a third-party investigation is being done for the sake of two little girls that were sexually abused on her watch. And here, and here she still sits here. I've heard no discussion nor indication that the board has brought a vote for this. I wonder why that is. Also, to my knowledge, we taxpayers have not been updated on this so-called third-party investigation. We need more taxpayers actually showing up to board meetings and speaking out for accountability. Basically, just look at Grapevine Colleville I S D. The last school board meeting, they had over 197 people speak. This is huge. It was huge impact for their community. It seems all of our board cares about is how beautiful our schools are and not, and nothing about how our kids are being taught, the fights that break out on a daily basis of overcrowding, and the drug problem that is running rampant through our middle and high schools. Believe me, I know this administration, board, and P I S D P D department will try every intimidation factor possible to shut you up if you speak out against anything in their agenda. From trespassing warnings on all P S D properties to having a sniper on a rooftop because 30 moms decided to have a peaceful protest because they want accountability for what took place under their watch. Legally, they cannot enforce this, nor can they tell you you can't clap or show your appreciation for support for a speaker. This is your First Amendment right. P I S D leadership is broken. If it stays on this path, our kids are the ones who will suffer the consequences. So take a stand and be heard.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett, for coming to share tonight. Amy Lancaster, good evening, Ms. Lancaster.
Hi, I'm Amy Lancaster. I'm an old Prosper person. I've been here 24 years. Much rather be home watching Tucker right now, but here I am because it's necessary. I want everybody to know, some of us seem to be getting a bad rap, like we're always negative, we're always dogging y'all. There's a reason for that. But I want to first say, I'm a very happy person. I'm a very positive person. And I'm going to just shine a little light on Holly for a hot second. My kids, I had proud group raised in this district. She was their fourth grade teacher. I pulled them out of a third grade class and put them in Holly's class because she was amazing. She held her, she held them in line. They didn't get out of line. She laughed with them. She taught them. She was my kid's favorite teacher. I loved her. I thought she was amazing. I don't know what's happened. A lot has changed. I can't say I love you anymore. But I will say we got a lot of problems in this district. We got a bus driver. This is just crazy. We have a bus driver that molested, that we know of right at the moment, two little girls over 100 times. How does that happen without anybody catching on? There's a video, there's a little camera in the bus. Who's monitoring those? Have we heard what you're going to do about this? No, not a word. I know somebody who used to be an ex-school bus driver. She tells me that the bus drivers monitor their own videos. Well, no wonder nobody caught this action. And the fact that one, one employee has not been vetted, I don't think so. I bet there's many more, and these are your precious children that they're not protecting. And they all listen to her. That's a problem. We still have gay pride flags flying in Rock Hill High School. Really? We still have transgender books being offered as an option to read one out of five books. Here, pick this one. Really? Transgender is like 2% of this population. We normal people are the majority. You need to be working with us, not the minority. And then when, the last thing I heard this, oh my gosh, I hope you're all on social media because there's a lot of stuff out there. There is a male cheer coach who tells the girls they will undress in front of him. And he's still employed. So since that's not a big deal to y'all, the fact he's still employed, all eight of you stand up, strip down, let us all observe and think, this is fine. It's cool. You have no problem with it. Take off your clothes. We're all adults in the room. These are little girls. They don't know how to deal with this. You are causing psychological problems from the little bitty girls that got molested to the big girls that are being sexually or visually molested by their coach. Come on, guys. This is Prosper. Are you not watching the news? You're like every other district that's got sexualizing our children. Is this okay? Do you talk to God about it? Let me tell you something. The good Lord is going to make you answer for this. These are his babies.
Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Your time has expired. Chrissy Ball is our final speaker for the evening. Good evening, Ms. Ball.
Evening. Hi, I'm Chrissy Ball. I've got children in the school district, proudly so. I am a big advocate for public education as well as this district. And I came today to speak based off of the last board meeting and the few people that have come up here. I recognize that what has happened with the lawsuit, sexual assault is still unfolding. And so I am here simply speaking based off of the behavior that I have seen publicly addressing not only our board, but our community because it is frankly disgusting. And so I couldn't just sit back and not say anything. So to give a little history on myself, I am a Larry Nassar sexual assault survivor. And I have advocated for Olympic athletes as well as college athletes over the past four years. We got bills, a bill passed for Olympic athletes under President Trump and are working currently to pass a bill for collegiate athletes under this current administration. I would think that everybody in this room would think that protecting our children from sexual assault is a bipartisan effort. I'm saying that because online, if we don't speak ill of our district or the administration, apparently we don't champion children. So I strongly disagree with that, and my hope is that other people would feel the same. I recognize that this is a polarizing conversation and discussion. It's very difficult to talk about. And it has us all questioning what people's intentions are. I recognize that there is really no perfect way to navigate something like this. There are a lot of questions. And I, I agree, Mr. Linker, that there should be a third-party investigation. I however question why there's even a public conversation about that based off of that, it's your job as your elected position to protect our children amongst your colleagues. So I question that intention and frankly, any board member, public commenting on an active investigation, it's just not a wise thing to do. I'd also encourage the board to pursue any legal actions possible that have gone after our administration in any way to smear their public image just for clickbait. I, I really believe that that is important to keep the integrity of our district and all the work that our administration staff and everybody involved that, that come on a daily basis to support our children. I don't know any adult in this building, regardless of what you believe, would come and want any child to be sexually abused unless you are the predator. So my hope is that our community, we hold each other to a higher standard. There are parents that are, are happy that they have been quoted on the news, and I think that's shocking and disgusting. It actually takes a skill set to speak publicly and have, and be on TV. And I think they should develop that skill set instead of using this for their five minutes of fame. And lastly, I just want to encourage our community.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Your time has expired.
To come together and use this energy so that we can advocate and, and make something positive. We are Prosper. Let's choose to be one.
The board will now go into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Sections 551 dot 071 dot 072 dot 074 dot 076 dot 0821. When we are finished with our closed session discussions, we will return to open session to take any action items, take action on any items that are needed. The time is now 8:46 PM, and the board is going into closed session. and the board is going into closed session.
Okay, the time is ten twenty eight P M and we are back in from closed session. Um, we have a couple of things to wrap up before the night ends. We are at agenda item twelve A. Consideration and possible action regarding level three student parent grievance. The Board of Trustees has heard your concerns on October the sixth twenty twenty two. The Board of Trustees does not comment with regard to personnel matters. Therefore, no public comment will be made with regard to the remedy sought by the grievant. Therefore, is there a motion to take action with regard to this grievance? Hearing no motion, we will continue on to agenda item twelve B. Consideration and possible action regarding the superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination of the probationary contract of teacher Jason Crown. Is that your recommendation, Dr. Ferguson? Is there a motion on this matter?
Yes, I move to propose the termination of Jason Crown's probationary contract.
Thank you, trustee Dial. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, trustee Linker. Any conversation, any deliberation? All in favor of this motion? That is all seven of us. Agenda item twelve C, consideration and possible action regarding hiring contract personnel. May I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the hiring of all contract personnel as presented by the administration.
Thank you, trustee Dixon. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, trustee Beavers. All in favor? That's all seven of us. If there are no objections, the time is now ten.
One more.
There is, yes. There's one other thing on there.
Yes.
Thank you. Let me mention briefly, thank you for the reminder. Briefly, earlier tonight, we talked about the subcommittee for zoning. There was another subcommittee meeting this past week with the school safety and security subcommittee and myself, as well as trustee Smith and trustee Beavers are on that subcommittee. I would ask that one of you would just kind of share the highlight from that meeting.
Sure. One of the important things to come out of that was an intruder detection audit was conducted by the T X S S C and a corrective action plan was a corrective action was put into place due to the findings. There's going to be more information coming out about this from the district, so that will be posted in a timely manner.
Thank you, trustee Beavers, trustee Smith. And you want to add anything to that at all? Thank you so much. Okay, that is all of the agenda items for tonight. It is ten thirty one P M. If there are no objections, this meeting is adjourned. Good night, y'all.